Let's see, I can never remember, since we are not pictured on the screen, does that mean we're not live?
Uh, no, we should be live.
Now we're live.
Yeah.
Okay, so yes, I was right.
I think Bill just had the camera off to make us all feel comfortable.
I think we should have all committees have to be on camera. Everyone would quit, that's what we were told years ago when that was suggested, really not happening. Is someone prepared to accept the minutes?
Sure.
Did anybody read them? Did you? I read them a long time ago, right? Okay. I've been trying to read them the same day she sends them because then I don't have to remember, did I read them or did I not? Because I just do it and it's done.
See, and I have to admit, Kevin, I almost always read them, but I don't worry about finding any mistakes because I know if there are, you'll find.
Or I'll create one or two to be mistaken.
But it's been, it's been two or three meetings at least since she's found any mistake.
It has been.
It's a good sign. Okay, let's do it.
Oh, welcome to this regular meeting of the Reed Field Select Board on July 22nd, 2024. I'll call the meeting to order at 6:30. If you would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
At Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We have one excused absence tonight. Sean Keegan can't be here due to illness. So we will go ahead without him, but miss him dearly. We're going to do our regular meeting items and then we're going to take item. I'm gonna find it. Twenty-five dash zero zero six, the 2024 tax commitment out of order because our assessing agent is present and we want to let him go home sooner than later. So twenty-five zero zero one are the minutes of the select board meeting of June 17th, 2024. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to accept the minutes.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, is there any discussion? Great job, Angelica. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Item twenty-five dash zero zero two are the warrants fiscal year 24, number fifty-three to fifty-six. Since Sean is not here, whoops. Oh, how did I do that? It just got small. Okay, let's do this. Sorry, since Sean's not here, I will go over that for us. Or not, why am I on warrant one and two?
Yeah, that's what I was just looking at. How do we get that in?
Okay.
New fiscal year.
Fifty-three and fifty-four is in the total amount of one hundred twenty-two thousand, seven hundred eighty-four dollars and seven cents. Payroll is fifty-four thousand, nine forty-eight, fifty-nine. And accounts payable sixty-seven thousand, eight thirty-five and forty-eight cents. Items of note, we paid for portable toilets, five hundred and five dollars, is that for the season or is that monthly?
Well, that's monthly during the season, yeah. We have several out, we have the fairgrounds, the beach, and then at least one typically for a fair amount of the season at the elementary school. And we, in the past, have had one at the high school athletic fields as well, but I have to check on the status of that one.
Okay, we had all the usual suspects. We had a payment of fifteen hundred dollars to cushion construction, twenty-five hundred to Dirigo assessing group, I assume that's for the revale. Fifteen hundred to David Ladue is his stipend, that is normal. Elan Financial Services seventeen hundred and fourteen dollars, set for the copier.
So what was that last one again?
Elan Financial Services.
Uh, Elian, so that's the, that's the credit card, the town's credit card that we have that has, think about it, similar to a petty cash. The fees get aggregated, a lot of times things like Amazon purchases, stuff like that for the beach, whatever, you know. That's, that's where that stuff shows up is Elian Financial.
We had Ellis Construction for six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars and someone told me what it was for, now I can't remember.
Sweeping, sweep.
Oh, that was the sweeping of the roads. Very important, keeps the sand out of the ditches. We really like that. We had nineteen hundred ninety-seven dollars and nine cents to a Leo Porter and that is a new item. Eric, you want to explain that because we're going to see a few of these this year?
Uh, sorry, I'm trying to.
That's okay, so it was a veterans exemption, I believe.
Yes, so we, because of the change in state law, we do, we are processing veterans exemptions for motor vehicle excise tax, as long as people, A, have been in the armed services, B, provide documentation of such, and C, do it at the time of the vehicle registration. So we had a couple that early on we were able to make some accommodations for because it was a new program and the way it kind of fallen out. But we do expect more of these and then it's ongoing every year after that. There is no scheduled limitation or end to that program. The unfortunate thing is the state has said that there's an exemption, but we are getting no offset or reimbursement from them for this exemption that they've created, so.
And is this for all veterans or is there an income level?
It's for all veterans and for any number of vehicles, so it's, it's very generous, put it that way. Disabled veteran, that's right.
Disabled veteran.
That's, that's, that's the key piece that I was.
Being the person who processes those, you would know that information, that's great. So that is a benefit that's available to people. And I guess what we're doing now is we just aren't charging them rather than these were ones that they were charged for and so we had to refund it.
Yeah.
Great. And we had four thousand twenty-five dollars to main trailer, that's for a new box trailer at the transfer station that is not dangerous. And it's on the ground, right, it's not up on wheels?
Yeah, it's a shipping container and the ones with wheels will be getting cleared out so we can have more room there, better visibility and more room for parking, so.
Great. So those are the highlights. Does anyone want to make a motion to approve warrants fifty-three to fifty-six?
Yeah, I'll try it. I'll make a motion to approve warrants fifty-three through fifty-six in the amount of one hundred and twenty-two thousand, seven hundred eighty-four dollars and seven cents. There's another one, right? Down to the other amount.
Oh. That was actually fifty-three and fifty-four.
Yeah.
So let's do that one separately.
Okay, we'll do it separate.
Did I have a second? Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? It is unanimous, warrants fifty-five and fifty-six in the total amount of fifty-two thousand, one hundred sixty-two dollars and sixty-six cents. We had the state warrant and we had some accounts payable, it was a much smaller one. And item of note was eleven thousand, five hundred eighty-three dollars and eighty-three cents to David Morrow for the heat pumps at the upstairs back rooms of the library. And those are being covered by a grant that the town received. Twenty-one hundred dollars even to Joseph Farinini, who is a stone mason who works on the cemetery stones. He does fabulous work and he worked with Ben and another town employee for a week doing great work. Although I think this was the first one. Seven thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars to Stevenson Solutions, that was for tree work at the cemeteries. And everything else is pretty much the same, four hundred dollars to the Weatherbain Restaurant, that was for the volunteer appreciation event. And that was at cost from the Weatherbain.
They did a great job with that, it was awesome.
It was really great. So that amount in total for fifty-five and six is fifty-two thousand, one sixty-two, sixty-six. Anyone want to so move that?
So move.
He's going to second it.
I'll second it.
I have a motion in a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Okay, now did we finish the warrants or do we have to do one and two?
I think you need to do one and two as well because those are the current fiscal year, the last two batches you did were last fiscal year. And then we have the first two from this fiscal year.
Just have to get back up to where they are. Sorry. The total amount is eighty-one thousand, seven twenty-two, twenty-three. Payroll was thirty-seven thousand, five fourteen seventy-eight and the accounts payable were forty-four thousand, two hundred and seven dollars and forty-five cents. Anything of note, Anders Gogman Bank was seventeen thousand, three thirty-nine, thirty-six and Eric, that would be for?
Oh, that's a lease payment for the town truck.
That would be the first one? That's the new town truck?
Yes, yep, yep.
And that's the only payment this year, this fiscal year?
Um, I believe so.
Okay.
Yeah.
We paid our dues to KV cog, four thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars. We did a pass-through to the Reed Field Blizzard Busters of sixteen hundred and ninety-five dollars, that's what we take in for fees. And they petition the town each year to ask for that to use to run their club and clear the trails. And we made a payment of ten thousand, six ninety-nine, sixty-four to the town of Winthrop and I'm betting that was for dispatch?
That's for dispatch.
For dispatch. Total was eighty-one thousand, seven twenty-two, twenty-three.
I'm moved to accept warrants one and two in the amount of eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars and twenty-three cents.
Second?
I have a motion to second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? It is unanimous. With the pleasure of the board, I would now take item twenty-five dash zero zero six out of order, is that all right? Okay, so Mr. Ladue, if you could come to the podium, please, between you and Eric, we'll get this taken care of.
Eric take care of most of it. Today was a commitment day for the twenty-four, twenty-five taxes. What that means is we essentially took all the information that was in the computer system that's been gathered over the years. And everything has been updated since last year's commitment. And we bundle that into the commitment for twenty-four, twenty-five. And from that, the tax bills will be printed and Eric can speak more to when that would go out. But in essence, with the signing of the warrants, we have a legal commitment for twenty-four, twenty-five tax year. What we've done this year is, as we've done in prior years, with factored values, trying to keep up to as much as close to ninety, hundred percent of market value as we could. This year was our largest increase, it was a twenty percent increase across the board for all land and buildings. Personal property, we assess separately in a different process, but that essentially reflects a hundred percent of fair market value also. Overall values factor, we do a cost factor increase, or we did one twenty percent this year, that averaged out to slightly under fourteen percent increase in the actual local assessed values. You've been working on the budget increases for many weeks, months now, have a better handle on that than, than I would, but yeah, taxes will be going up this year, Eric can fill you in on rough percentages. The, the one thing I'd like to note is I work a, for a year, processing all the paperwork that comes in, going out and visiting the properties that are under construction. We're required to pick up the value as of April first, so right around the last couple of weeks in March, first few weeks in April is really my busiest time. We compile all that data, put it into the computer and then hopefully things work out. As, as Eric was working through the computer system today, he got to the point where we were getting to the tax rate. And he said, wow, that's better than I thought. Not by much, but very, very close to the estimates. And I breathe a huge sigh of relief at that.
Yay.
So I don't know what you want to hear as far as specifics. Eric, perhaps a good time for you to jump in?
Sure, yeah, so Dave mentioned the factoring, that's, that's an important part of this discussion. Twenty percent sounds like a lot, but that really just keeps us on pace with what the state of Maine says we should be worth. From twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year, we've seen a sixty-five percent increase in real estate values. And that's not us driving that, we're, we're following the state of Maine, the state of Maine has said we're, we should be probably closer to seventy or seventy-five percent increase. But we're trying to, to not overshoot, so we're trying to catch that wave, not let them take away any of the homestead exemption value that they do offer us. So we, we have to be close and Dave has done a great job of keeping us close and also working with the state to be a little bit flexible so that we can have that, that kind of leeway to be close but not, not overdo it. And that's a good thing for us to, to keep in mind. The other thing is that, yeah, we are going to see an increase in, in taxes. The mill rate's gone down, so the mill rate, actually, we were estimating thirteen, four, one, thirteen point four, one, a dollars per thousand. And what we actually saw was thirteen point three nine. So again, as Dave said, we're very close to where we projected, it's always nice to come in just under. And we did that this year, so I'm pleased. But there is an increase, I looked at my own taxes, they're going up, you know, three, three hundred dollars, something like that, it's a fair amount, but what's happened is we've had increases at the town level, increases at the county level and increases at the school level. So the RSU is around eight percent, eight and a half percent. The town, I think we were around six or seven percent and the county was twenty-three. But those all make up different proportions of the tax bill. And so the net result really is for most residents, you'll be seeing around eight percent increase, which is a lot in one year. But we are digging out of the COVID, you know, impacts, the town particularly, we're actually back to the same out-of-pocket impact municipal services had back before COVID. We are seeing an increase in the county and, and that's in large part because they used some of their funds to pay for things that probably ought to have been paid for by taxes. And now we're getting hit with it all in one year, among other things, despite their best efforts to keep it down. The RSU, they do their best, but they do have things that are beyond their control, contract negotiations, the cost of services, all of those things, so. I, I'd say that overall, it was a very, pretty straightforward tax commitment this year. Tax bills will be going out in the next couple of weeks, I'd say, early, early August is probably when the bills will come out. That is a good lead time because the, the taxes are not due the first half until the end of September. So we're giving sixty days, state law requires a minimum of thirty, so we're going to be, you know, doing better than that. And by a fair bit, so pleased with that schedule. And then the second half taxes are due end of February, so we do have those two different deadlines for folks to make it a little bit easier. And overall, again, Dave did a great job, Chris is going to be, Angelica will be helping with the, the billing piece of this. And then we'll start collecting and hopefully we'll have a good even revenue stream without too much of an impact, so.
I guess I'd just like to clarify and then we'll take Bruce's comment. So the increase we're going to see is not because of the twenty percent increase in value. It's because the budgets have increased. And I know sometimes people get confused with that, so we've increased the value and then that decreases the mill rate to have the same amount of taxes we had previously. Correct? And then the increase because of the budget increases is what has driven the mill rate to rise?
Well, the mill rate's down, so all else being equal, if the, if the value of the property goes up by twenty percent, the mill rate would go down by twenty percent. But that didn't happen, it went down just a little bit, maybe, maybe ten percent because we had that eight percent increase in aggregate for the cost of services.
And so in past years, we've been doing about a ten percent increase, is that correct?
We've done thus five years is ten, 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 fifteen and twenty.
Okay, and is this on all properties? Because I know in some years we've done residential and not commercial?
First couple of years, we didn't touch the commercial because really, commercial is probably flat or even a negative for a couple of years, so. But now, now we're increases across the board.
Okay. That's it for me, anyone else up here?
I'm just wondering if it might be helpful to explain where you get that figure of, by bringing it up twenty thousand and there's a figure between the, the sold value and the appraised value and where we're supposed to fall. So I think a lot of people don't understand that.
Yeah, there's a, we, we deal with all kinds of statistics and, and ratios are something that we're always dealing with. And the, the main ratio with the state is what they call a developed parcel ratio, which is ratio developed by residential properties predominantly, residential properties that have sold. You have the selling price and then you, you take the assessed value divided by the selling price to come up with a ratio. What is that property assessed at as a ratio or as a percentage compared to its selling price? You you do that for every sale and typically we have sixty to eighty sales in that in that study that we do. And you you sort them in ascending order and you do some exclusions and you come up with with an overall average. The state formula is kind of fixed. I I worked for the state for many years. I'm very familiar with the formula and and how that works. So that's that's the ratio thing that we're always dealing with. The state, when it comes to the homestead exemption specifically, says that a town must certify something which is in within ten percent of what their developed parcel ratio was as determined by the state for two years prior. And then we can we can certify something within ten percent of that, or we might increase our assessment so that we can certify something higher. And we've tried to keep our increases at a point where with a straight face, we can we can certify a hundred percent ratio. Well, we're sort of looking back a year or two at at the state numbers. Keep it in mind that the 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 current figures might show that we're at eighty five percent maybe, but we can certify knowing that we made these increases for five years and it shows that we're trying. Most municipalities don't do factor up their values. They'll they'll wait and do a reval and do it all at once. This this I think is a much more progressive way to do it. And we've had very, very few questions over the years when we've done this factoring to the properties. The other, the other key number as an assessor is mill rate and it's a lot of people don't seem to understand it, but it's how it is developed is very simple in concept. It's gotten complicated by the legislature and everything that gets thrown into the mix. But essentially, historically, you take all the money that needs to be raised through the property tax for municipal, school and county taxes. And you divide it by the total value of all taxable property in town and that's how you come up with the mill rate. So when we increase values twenty percent on the cost factor, which is actually about a fourteen percent increase in actual assessed value, that by itself would would decrease the mill rate, but it wouldn't change the amount of money that is raised through taxes. It's the budget process which determines whether there's going to be an increase or a decrease in taxes overall.
And that's the part the citizens vote on is the budget. And so when that goes up or down, that's because of how we voted as a town. Great. Bruce had a question.
Bruce, for going, thanks for all the hard work on that. Would you just for the record, clarify the three factors that our taxes cover? Percentage wise, school, county and town. I know that's printed on the bill itself.
Yes.
But I'd like to just have everyone hear that.
While Eric's looking that up, it's something like three quarters school.
Right around seventy five, twenty five.
Town and five percent county is something like that.
Yeah, I have that presentation.
My point is certainly not to point a finger any place at all to just have the accurate information known. We all see that on our bill, but I think it's very important that people understand there's three different levels of governance in determining budgets that then lead into your tax bill and this is one of them. The other two don't send out the bill.
Right.
We do.
And so everybody thinks it's the town and it isn't really. Do you have the, Eric?
Yeah, and so so Dave was very close. It's seventy five percent school, twenty percent town and five percent county.
Anybody else? Okay, I know we went way over on that, but it's a great discussion and nothing is more important than people understanding what they're paying for and how it happens. Thank you, Dave. You're all good. You don't have to stick around. We do have Simon Thorne here online and it is about seven o'clock when we said we would do that, so I with your permission, I'd like to take twenty five dash zero zero seven out of order, which is to discuss the status of the partial fiber optic line build out in Reed Field by Consolidated Communications. So I'll give it to Eric and then to Simon.
Sure, so first to Bill, if you could allow Simon to share his screen, I think he does have or may have some things he wants to share with us. But Simon has been working with Consolidated Communication for a number of years. He's been our primary point of contact as we over the past several years looked at fiber options in the town of Reed Field. One of the first things we we saw when we were in this process was that Consolidated was in the area, but they weren't working in Reed Field three, three, four years ago. They were working in Manchester and kind of building out this direction, but it's come to the point now where through their own investment and also state funds that are coming from the federal government, they are starting to build in our area. And so really, the the reason we've invited Simon is to talk about what is happening in Reed Field and to discuss in 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 some detail, if if the board's interested, what might happen in the future, so. Simon's met with myself a few times with our connectivity committee and is well versed in in what we're where we are positioned as a town, but also of course in 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 where Consolidated is in their process, so.
Great.
Good evening, everyone. Appreciate the time. So as as Eric mentioned, my name is Simon Thorne. I'm the Senior Manager for Government Affairs with Consolidated Communications. As Eric mentioned, we responded to an RFP for Fayette, the town of Fayette. We were awarded that and our our network is not built per town boundary and so the portion of Fayette that we were awarded is actually served out of our Reed Field Central Office. And so when our planning folks started to take a look at that, they said, well, you know, we're going to go from the central office into Fayette. Let's build some of Reed Field. And so I think, and and I've got a map that I can share while we're talking, but for all intents purposes, half of Reed Field plus or minus is going to be built as part of that RFP response for the town of Fayette, which will include a small portion of Wayne and and portions of Mount Vernon. And as Eric had mentioned, I had had conversations with the broadband committee in the past about trying to do some sort of a network expansion within the town and it just didn't seem to work. So as I brought this to light to the committee, I mentioned that maybe there's a way that we could get the remainder of the town built and so that's kind of a short story as to where we are and how we got here. And I will share my screen. Eric, everybody, if you can just let me know that you can see that.
It's there.
Okay, perfect. So I I guess the first thing I'll address is the colors. Everybody wants to know why are the different colors? We use that internally. Each color represents a fiber distribution hub. So it's just serving a specific area. So anywhere that you see a color, basically, the takeaway is that location will have the ability to take service from us. We offer all symmetrical services. Today, our top speed is two gig symmetrical. The network is scalable to ten gig, which will happen at some point in the future when the the demand for that type of speed is available or or needed, I should say. So I I thought, Eric, I would kind of stop with that and maybe field questions.
I have one to start. Can you describe on the map where Reed Field is?
Certainly, yes. So a little hard to see, but the yellow boundary here is Reed Field. And so what we're looking at here, I'll zoom out just a little bit. Wayne, Fayette, Mount Vernon.
And you said that's a about half. Is that half geographically or is that half of physical buildings that could connect?
I think that's half geographically. I think the the passings, the amount of passings that we will pass through, I I can get to you. It's it's over a thousand, I believe. Maybe closer to two, but I would I would have to to verify that. You know, for for me and in my terminology, I I say half. As you look at the map there, you, I I think maybe you could make an argument that it's just under half of the town.
All depends on where all the roads are, right?
Right.
So this proposal that you're, it's not a proposal. This was actually started today in Reed Field. They were out on Route seventeen stringing fiber. That's pretty cool to see.
Did they get past the railroad?
They, no, they stopped. They started. It looked like they started at the top of Kent Hill and they're coming down. There's a giant spool on the side of the road.
Yes, railroads can be interesting to navigate. There's a special process that we need to go through in order to cross them. Those those crews will be in region, I'm guessing for eight to twelve weeks and we will wrap the build up and and move to the next town.
I think the reason Eric was mentioning the railroad today is that it they closed Route seventeen to repair the railroad crossing. So it was a little interesting. So this is all being done on with consolidated investment. There's no investment by the town in what you're showing us on the map. Is that correct?
That's right. This is purely our investment. We've we've been awarded funds, as I mentioned, to build Fayette. We're going to spend our own dollars to build, you know, what you see here of Reed Field.
I have more questions, but I'll defer to other people in the room.
So since you're being paid to do the Fayette networks, I mean, I can see that some of these lead into Fayette, but some of them do not. So what what's the rationale for which particular, what do you call them, hubs? That you're setting up that are, if you're doing a build out in in Reed Field?
We we have a process internally where we, you know, road miles, passings per mile, costs associated with that, you know, tree trimming, placing new strand. And that, you know, it's a it's a formula that we use. Now, to your point, some of those routes we we need, we need them to get into different parts of Fayette. Other portions of that we don't need, such as down, down here, if you can see my screen, you know, the the yellow here, the orange going north, if you will, the purple down here. We don't need those, but we've determined that makes makes sense to spread the network down there, to go down there.
Where that ends about the end of the lake, is is that due to the railroad crossing? And and would you?
No.
No.
No, the the trestle's way up in the middle.
I know the trestle is, but in
No, you mean the seventeen end, right?
Yeah, they're not going out as far as the railroad, actually.
Yeah, because you're stopping right by the end of the lake.
It's stopping at church, so it's at forty one and branching off towards the lake and then on the other side of Route seventeen, it's going up Church Road. And it it's going out Fog and Sadie Dunn.
Right.
On Route seventeen, right at the end of the school driveway, just about.
What I'm saying in in the future, would that hinder the expansion towards Manchester being that a railroad crossing is there or?
Oh, no. No, we there, as I said, there is a, there's a process that we've we follow. We've we've got it down to a science. It takes time. And you're you're really at the beck and call of the railroad as to their schedule. But no, it wouldn't hinder it. We we would still build. I would I would guess that that large coil of fiber has been left there on purpose so that, you know, once they can get permission to cross the railroad, the fiber's there, they'll just uncoil it, lay it on the ground and lash it to existing facilities.
Anyone in the audience have a question yet? Just you just need to go to the mic so it's in the recording.
My name's Warren Norris. We're down there in the purple, the light purple. And I see that you're at the very, very end, right where it says I don't love Joy Pond. You're right in the middle. I'm just wondering about the timing of these various colors. Are they, they all aren't going in immediately? Can you give us an idea on timing?
Certainly, I I so basically, everything that you see there in all of the towns will be finished within eight to ten, potentially twelve weeks from today. So we come in with a lot of crews. We're very fast and efficient at what we do. It also helps that we have existing infrastructure, so typically we don't need to place, you know, new poles. Sometimes we run into locations where there's no strand and so we need to place strand, but it's relatively a quick process for us. So we're very quick. Right now, you'll see a lot of large trucks that will be moving throughout town. Basically, they've got a reel of fiber on the back of the truck and they're lashing it to the existing infrastructure. Once there, you know, a quarter to a half the way through of placing, we'll bring splicing crews in. They're more stationary. Those are the folks that will place terminals. They'll place the fiber distribution hubs and splice them together. And then we'll do end to end testing. Once a hub has been tested and accepted, we will release that for sale. So folks who are interested in taking service from us, I would, I would just suggest going onto fidianfiber.com and you can preorder service. And we will notify you when the network is complete. And we'll send you updates along the way. And then when it's time to actually schedule your install, we will call you. So it's a quick turnaround, I guess. A short story, it's a quick turnaround.
One more question. We're we're down at the end of a private road. I see that it doesn't really go down all the way to where a lot of our residents are. What will be the factor for you putting that string or strand down to those people? Is that going to be an extra cost?
I think the short answer is no. What you're seeing here is cable, actual fiber cable. We also use fiber drop, which is just a different method of, you know, getting the signal to you. It's it's less expensive to place and so a lot of times in roads such as you're describing, we will use that and it would not be reflected on this map.
And you mentioned two gig scalable to ten gig. That's pretty fast. I mean, I don't know that we have too many gamers in our neighborhood. Is that a a per user speed that they would enjoy?
I, you know, I think two gig is is phenomenal speed today. I don't think most people could really use that kind of bandwidth. But we are building this network to be what we consider to be future proof and and I think it's kind of an industry quote, if you will, to be future proof. And what that means is you know, most folks we see today take a gig from us and that's more than adequate, more than what they would need. Where it comes into play is in the future years. And I always like to point to telemedicine. Today, you know, your reaction to ten gig is, that's crazy. Why would you do that? But even today, in in the slower speeds that are available, telemedicine is doing amazing things, but they're hindered by the speeds that are available, such as, you know, if you had certain medical condition, they might send a device home with you that is constantly monitoring you. And you might get a phone call from the hospital saying, hey, we're sending an ambulance to you because of what we're seeing from you being monitored. That that sort of telemedicine is going to become more and more prevalent in the future. So by building a fiber optic network scalable to ten gig and potentially beyond in the future, it ensures that we can scale to the needs of the customer base. Right, if, you know, if you if you were to think about a Star Trek analogy, right, beam me up, Scotty, you know, maybe in the future, there's there's something there with the fiber optic technology because fiber in and of itself, it's unknown how fast we can send traffic on it. What limits the fiber is the equipment on either end. And so that's where you get the the future proof from, because what is equipment advances. We will stay abreast to it and upgrade as necessary.
Thank you, Simon.
Jared.
I I'd just like to request Eric preorder it to the town office. It's not a contract, so I don't think we need a motion. He hasn't done it already. It's like him doing first thing.
I agree. We've never authorized him to be with a with Spectrum or Consolidated before, so. That's just part of his duties, right?
Well, yes, and we're with Consolidated already, because they offer far superior service to Spectrum. But we're on copper and we'll be switching over to fiber immediately when it's available.
Simon, I I already signed up and I was looking. I I put in all sorts of different roads to find out how far east we were going with what you're showing us. What is the, I just don't remember. What's the lowest package you're offering? Is it three hundred symmetrical?
No, so we've we today, we have four speed tiers. We have a one hundred, a three hundred, a one gig and a two gig. The one hundred megabit symmetrical service is twenty-five dollars a month to start. That's the price for the first year. After the first year, it will jump to forty-five dollars a month. That is the the price. We don't have contracts in any of our speed tiers and installation is free. We offer free installation now. I would say that the the key for us for free installation is a path. We we need a path from the pole to the home. So, you know, if you're four, three, two hundred feet from that pole. And you're served via a pole line or by the air, that's really easy, right? That's really easy. Where we get into some trouble or where it can become an expense for the consumer is in the underground. So an example I would use is if you have a conduit. And we are able to pull our fiber into that existing conduit, there's no charge. If you have a conduit at the pole and you have a conduit at the home. You order service, we come out thinking we can pull a fiber in there and we determine that it is. Direct buried and the conduit was placed merely for show. We will do up to five hundred feet of a micro trench. Microfiber, a conduit, microfiber, you know, one unit, if you will, with a tracer wire on it. We'll do that for free as part of your service. The the issue becomes, what happens if I'm five hundred and fifty feet? Anything beyond five hundred feet, we actually require the customer to place the entirety of the conduit. We we will only do five hundred feet. Now, you're probably saying, that's ridiculous. Why would you not just go fifty more feet? We we have had a lot of success and folks using this. And so scheduling becomes a bit difficult when you can't guarantee the footage that you're placing that day for that particular customer. The other part to the puzzle was. We would allow folks to do the remainder of the the footage after the five hundred feet. And not charge anything beyond it, right? So you could place the fifty feet of conduit and we would, you you know, we would place the fiber for free. The problem became folks were actually using crazy items as a conduit, such as a garden hose. And as soon as you backfill a garden hose, that path is flat. And so the customers become quite upset when they realize what they've done. Is stopping the install and needs to be redone. And so, you know, as a company, we took a stand that five hundred feet we would do up to. And if it was beyond five hundred feet, we would require the customer to provide that path.
And what's the price on the, so you said it was three hundred? And what was the next level? A one hundred, three hundred? What's the three hundred level cost?
That's a very good question. I don't have that in front of me, believe it or not. I I don't ever get that question.
Okay, it it's still cheaper than anything that we're offered by other competitors currently. I do remember that when I was looking at it. So this is awesome and what a benefit for Reed Field, something we certainly were never expecting to have happen here. So a big thank you to Consolidated and Fidian for doing this. I guess that's really not adequate. We need a bigger thank you than that. It was two years ago that we did not do the broadband expansion. Is that correct, Eric?
Believe so.
Okay. And so now I'm sure some people will say, see, we we knew if we just waited, something would come. And so here we are and something came and that's really awesome. Is there any proposal? I think you mentioned something at the beginning. Can we cover the rest of Reed Field? Is there a timeline for that? Is there a cost estimate? And then the last question is, what about the bead money that's still being developed? The process for covering those eighty-four completely unserved properties in Reed Field?
Why, that's a that's a lot of questions, so.
I know we discussed them as a committee, but we, you know, you said, well, we have to wait until. You guys are starting this and then you would know more. And so that, I guess that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, it's a great, great question all the way around. So I think that there is a mechanism to. To provide service to the remainder of the community. I think that Consolidated. Has has done what makes economic sense for us to do with our own dollars. We have a target cost per passing and and so once it goes beyond that target cost per passing, we. For all intents purposes, stop building. And so. I think there is a cost associated with the remainder of the build, which, you know, I could get in more detail. Maybe with the broadband committee. I think there's also a dollar amount that the town. Could present where we would fund the balance, right? It would bring that cost per passing down to something that that we would fund the remainder. For the eighty-four remaining bead eligible locations. I I'm going to get into a bit of a long-winded response here, but I think in order to understand what's going on, I I think it kind of deserves. A a long-winded response, so forgive me, but. What the main connectivity authority is doing, they're they're grouping locations together. Into what they're calling a project service area or a PSA. They are required to fund networks to feed those eighty-four locations first. Throughout the state before they fund anything else with the remainder of their bead funds. We don't really know what those project service areas look like. We do know that they're going to try to group sparsely populated locations with some density. You could almost think of this as a reverse auction, as in they're hoping to get multiple bidders. To bid on those project service areas. Because they're hoping that the bidders will bring more money to the table. Requiring less of their bead funding to build the locations out. So I think there is a path there. It's a little muddled at the moment as to what that looks like. You know, we we will be as a company aggressive. In trying to go after those all all locations that make sense, but at the end of the day, there's only so much money to go around. So. You know, I I know you're looking for a more definitive answer and I apologize that I can't give you one. But I think there is a conversation to be had. There is a dollar amount that would make bead. And it would take bead out of the conversation because we would just do it. Right at at a certain price. I think we would just do it. And so it really, I think it would become the town's decision. As to. What what how how you would want to proceed, right? Would you want to try to wait for bead and bring that cost down? There's there's lots of different avenues to go. So that that would be my long-winded, short response. How's that?
That's great. And is the bead still on the same timeline? Are they expecting that like in August, September to have those project service areas defined and out for bid?
They will be defined. I don't know truly when the bidding will start. There's a potential that it's this year, but it's it's kind of a bit of a process because. The NTIA is the one that's really ruling the lay of the land for this process. And so the main connectivity authority puts a plan together. They send it to the NTA. The NTA reviews it. They may call out a few items. They get addressed. It comes back as approved. And then the main connectivity authority can move forward. So, you know, they're they're always hesitant about timelines. I think that awards would not be finalized until twenty-five would be my my guess. And I think that depending on when that was in twenty-five, it would put a potential build timeline. In twenty-six, twenty twenty-six.
Okay, so if Reed Field was interested in trying to cover the rest of town. Is there a timeline or a time period in which consolidate is is willing to do that? Or is it open-ended? We could do it anytime.
Hey, I I'm not sure that I understand your question. So let me let me phrase it to you this way. If you gave me a decision. In September and the the money money made sense. I would try to get us to build this no later than the end of next year. With the understanding that we are putting our twenty twenty-five build plan together today, right? So the later it gets into the year, the more likely it would be that we would push into the next year. Depending on, you know, how things went. But we're very quick. I don't, I wouldn't anticipate the remainder of the town taking much more than eight weeks to build, if that. So I I don't think it would be an issue. Again, there's a process to go through internally, right? I'm just giving you an off-the-cuff response.
So Catherine, I I really appreciate what you've given us for information, Simon. It's really thorough. But I'm afraid you're going to fire me as timekeeper, Catherine, if this continues. We allocated twenty minutes for the consolidating and it's been almost thirty-five now. And we're forty-five minutes into the meeting and we're supposed to be a half an hour. So just saying, if you want to fire me, fire me now, but you know, just pointing that out.
Nope, it's that's important. So what I've heard is that we may or may not want to wait for the bead funding because that could be a couple of years forward. And you're going to have part of town that has this service and the other part of town that doesn't. And so is this the time that Consolidated is now ready that you can meet with us? And we can talk about what a proposal would be for the rest of Reed Field now that you're building here?
Yes, we could have that conversation. The other comment that I would make is that. As mentioned, it is a competitive bid, so it could be that another ISP. Could bid and win. And so you would have two different networks, not. And I want to be cautious of what I say because I I'm an ISP. I don't want to belittle another one. So I would just say that not all networks are created equal. And so there would be, it could potentially be two different networks, two different levels of service within the community.
And my closing question is, thank you, Steve. What's the likelihood that if Reed Field doesn't want to do this now, that Consolidated would come back? Say in another two years and say, hey, we want to build the rest of Reed Field at no cost to you?
I I think there's always the chance that that happens. I certainly wouldn't want the community to hang the hat on the fact that that would happen. The state of Maine is very large. We have other areas that I'm not saying that Reed Field's not beautiful and a great place to be. So please don't take that from my response, but there are certainly other areas within the state that we would like to build out. That that would fit into our our cost model, if you will. And so we will have a tendency to go do those areas first. And, you know, we project that to be five to seven years. And then at at some point, we will sprinkle in and build where it makes sense from there.
Great. That's what I needed to know. We wanted this all on the recording so that people can reference it and and answer as many questions as possible. Anybody else? I know I was a hog. So if you, Eric, if you could be in touch with Simon, let's see what we can. Put together and get the information out to the residents. Jaren, I think probably going along with what you asked for, we ought to let people know through the town website that this is happening. And that they can go if they want to find out about service, where they go on the web. And if it if your address comes up as you can sign up for service, that means they're coming down your road. And if it says, this is not available in your area, that means we're not coming down your road now. So.
I I appreciate the time. Thank you for my long-winded answers and the allowing me to say them. I will end with, there's one thousand five hundred and ninety-three locations within the town of Reed Field that we will serve. If you're going on our website and you think that you've seen trucks go by your house and you believe service is available and our website says no. Please reach out to me. I will help you.
Cool. Thanks a lot, Simon. We'll be in touch.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Simon.
Okay, so thank you, Steve. We'll go back and do our communication items, starting with select board communications. Does any member of the board have anything they'd like to present? I'll just say that I did get up. I don't know if anybody else did to see the work being done at the cemetery. And it was really interesting. Under one of the graves that they were digging up, they found something like twenty-five stones that were just buried stacked in there. Like kind of leveling, but it was like a little depository of of miscellaneous things that don't have names on them. They just have like dates or an initial. And it was several veterans, a couple from the Civil War, I think, and. It's just amazing. And the amount of work we have to do in that cemetery is huge. So I think Ben's going to put together something for us on that. Okay, staff communication. Eric, your manager's report and treasurer's report?
Okay, I'll try to get through these quickly. I'm not going to read everything.
I'm watching, Eric.
There's a lot and I I don't want, he's close enough to hit me, so.
Give me a job, man.
Yeah, I'll start with the town manager's report and just go through it quickly. A lot happening administratively. The summer residence meeting is five P M, August second at the town office. So that's where we we have select board members and occasionally the town manager. I probably won't be there this this Friday. But meet and talk with summer residents about issues that are more relevant to them. Of course, the public meeting and anybody's welcome, but I did include a a notice for that in the packet. Select board planning meeting, this is our our, what we call our retreat. Five thirty P M on July thirty-first, the town office. Expect information on that coming out. Later this week, but that's where we set priorities and goals for the coming year. Oftentimes, in reflection on the current achievements and past work that's been done. I'll be out of the office for August fourteenth to sixteenth or a manager's conference. You mentioned the volunteer appreciation. We did get really good feedback from everybody involved with that. So that is something I think we'll be continuing with. We're accepting applications for community planning, programming coordinator through the remainder of the summer. If we have a standout candidate, we'll make a hire, but for for now, we're wanting to leave it open. So if anybody has anybody that in mind or is interested themselves, we're looking to fill that that position. And it is an exciting opportunity, especially now that we have the full voter approval behind that process. We're switching to a dot gov domain extension. We did get approval from the federal government for that. That's going to happen. I expect by the end of September, Jaren's going to be assisting with that. So thanks, Jaren. Let's see, we're doing well with fundraising for the fairgrounds project. I I do appreciate everybody that's contributed so far, and we have some materials that we've put together that are going to be going out. Including digital. And being able to accept payment on the town's Andrew Pay affiliated website. Let's see. Let's see, um, we're restructuring staff in a few different areas. We're trying to be efficient at the beach. Um, Chief Mack and I have met with um, representatives from the age friendly committee. I want to touch on this one a little bit uh, to talk about um, the emergency operations plan. We typically kind of get into that and review that in December, January. Uh, we would very much like to make this year's revision and review of that focused on uh, the needs of our older residents and try to really plug in with them. Uh, they're doing some great work applying for uh, grant funds to, 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 to make some disaster preparedness kits. Um, and also just look at the needs of our community uh, when it comes to um, older residents. So I think that we've got some synergy there. Uh, they're doing good work. The select board and, and chief man have done great work over the past several years, keeping that plan updated. So those things I think can come together and we have an opportunity there for a great um, focused uh, division uh, when we get to that. Uh, and then uh, the tax commitment, we talked about that earlier. Roads, traffic and parking, uh, striping uh, has begun with the stop bars and crosswalks. Uh, we'll be doing long lines in August, uh, along with crack sealing. Uh, and I want to thank Lucas Striping specifically for uh, donating the striping that happened at the fire station. So they did that for us at no cost. So it's always good to have folks that we work with um, give back a little bit. So I wanted to point out that they did that and thank them. Uh, roadside mowing and clearing um, is effectively complete for the year. We're always touching stuff up. We're always doing uh, vegetation management. Uh, it always goes back. Uh, but the major push to get the stop signs cleared, uh, and the roadside mowing done, that was done in end of June, uh, into July. Um, we did receive an engineering report for the salt sand shed uh, that we had requested several months ago. That was passed on to our insurance company and our insurance company said, that's nice. We're going to pull your coverage. So um, we um, uh, have an issue there. We've known about it for some time. This isn't um, a complete surprise. Uh, but uh, I did talk to our current winter roads contractor uh, today about some possible approaches to that. Um, and I've talked to a few other towns, including Rome and Mount Vernon. Mount Vernon also had coverage pulled on their building. Um, it's really an across the board thing uh, by our insurance company. It's not necessarily us specifically, but um, the results are pretty clear. We need to, to figure this out in short order. Um, we're going to try a hail Mary on a repair. Uh, see if we can convince them that that's okay, but more than likely, we need to be moving forward very quickly with um, the, the replacement structure that we have been talking about for uh, the last year or two. Uh, with the slag block and the uh, the, the vinyl, uh, you know, dome uh, structure like what you see in Belgrade and other areas. So anyway, that's a disappointment, but something that we uh, do have money in the bank for because we've been saving for it. Uh, and I think we can get that done uh, before end of October, um, if need be. Uh, let's see, I applied for funds from the um, state of Maine for the Plains Road work. Uh, we did just approve the bid for that and that was actually helpful for us. That was part of our application. Uh, we could get up to a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars back. If so, that's going to make a big difference in our road budget, but uh, we'll know more about that in the next month. Uh, the railroad crossing uh, work that CSX has been undertaking uh, has been uh, difficult. They started off communicating fairly well with us. Uh, and then things kind of fell off the deep end. Uh, we didn't get good communication. They changed the schedule. They didn't inform us and they uh, to our chagrin, uh, closed all three crossing roads at once despite our protest uh, and, and uh, statement that you're going to affect our emergency response services. Uh, and all we got in response was crickets. So um, I'm just going to say we, you know, we, we started off on the right foot, but um, the town of Reed Field has no control over this schedule, no control over when it's completed. Um, we're very sorry for the burden this has put on our residents, but uh, we had, can't do anything more than what we have uh, which is to beg and plead and, and get nowhere. So um, let's see, the uh, F five fifty trucks that the town had purchased, uh, that is going to be picked up tomorrow. Uh, and brought to Bangalore for upfitting. So that's a bit of good news in all of this uh, work uh, that we've been discussing. Uh, maintenance for buildings, uh, we begin the process of switching over to town office power. Uh, we have um, a, a layout for power to come in uh, and connect up uh, right at the corner of the building here, uh, where we have other utilities coming in. Uh, and that'll be uh, a benefit to us. It'll hopefully be redundant. We, we're going to try to keep the underground power connection we have to Main Street or to Old Kent Hill Road, but by connecting to Main Street, that will uh, give us a much better chance of getting power back to this building quickly. Could be two or three days or a week quicker than other areas, depending on how things go. Um, so that's part of our emergency preparedness plan. Um, about five thousand dollar price tag for that from CMP, but I think well worth it. Um, if we can have a, an active warming shelter. Uh, we temporarily lost water uh, at the town office here. That was related, related to um, old infrastructure of the we had steel plumbing in a portion of the, of the building and the rust clogged our system. So that's been repaired, replaced with PEX tubing. Uh, let's see, the uh, heat pump installation was completed at the fires, uh, the um, library. Catherine mentioned that in the budget uh, discussion. Uh, water testing at the beach. This is a big one. Um, we did have to close the beach for uh, about a week. Uh, again, that was an inconvenience, but to me, it's a success story because we are testing and the testing did what it was supposed to, which was protect public health. Uh, we had a few factors come together that made that uh, uh, E coli count much higher than it normally would be. Um, the geese are a problem, but also we had severe thunderstorms with, with lots of rain uh, and extreme heat. Um, and so all those things contributed to make up a situation that we could not necessarily control. Uh, we have found some success with um, some spinning gadgets and uh, uh, different things happening at the uh, beach to help scare the geese away. Uh, and we're going to continue to harden off that area, make it harder for them and less attractive for them uh, as a pest um, to, to be there. And we're going to also, of course, continue to pick up the goose poop. Um, uh, but.
That's an attractive job offer. Come to the Reed Field Beach for your job and you can pick up goose poop.
Uh, but it's a big part of what they do, uh, and it's important because it's, it's public, it's public sanitation, right? Um, uh, uh, on a, a more positive note, the beach, the, the staff have started the roof replacement on the picnic structures. Um, this today, they stripped all three roofs, the tar papers on. Um, and so depending on the rain situation tomorrow, uh, they'll be cutting um, the um, the metal and we'll have the metal roofing going up. Uh, by the end of the week, I expect all things uh, going to plan. Uh, but the worst case scenario, we'll have those, those metal roofs on before heritage days. Um, and we are salvaging material from the old fire station roof. So we're going to be value added. Um, and I think we'll have a good long-term solution there that'll uh, keep the place dry and uh, won't cost us a fortune. So that's a positive. Transfer station, uh, summer hours still in effect. Um, household hazardous waste day was a success. Uh, it was too successful in some extents. It was the biggest we've ever had. Uh, we had some long lines, but the transfer station um, and staff and solid waste committee and uh, Katie Cog are working together to come up with some solutions to make the process more efficient. Uh, every year we do a debriefing and try to do better. Um, so I'm glad that we were able to offer that to our residents, uh, and we're going to continue to work on improving it. Um, challenges uh, at the station are continuing with folks not um, putting stickers on their vehicles. Uh, we're going to be increasingly more proactive on dealing with that. Um, it has been suggested that we get a sheriff's deputy there uh, for a couple Saturdays to help convince those people that think that the rules don't apply to them, that, that perhaps they do. Uh, but we're also working on letters, um, outlining consequences, things like that, just trying to get people um, to do really what's right to begin with, uh, and put the sticker on their vehicle so that we know um, that we're not taking trash from Mount Vernon or other areas uh, any more than we have to. Um, there's all, people always cheat, but the stickers are, are best way to make sure that we don't have people abusing the system. And that's it from my town manager's report. I'm sure I missed some stuff. This is a long one because it covers about six weeks. So my apologies for the length, Steve. I think I kept it under ten minutes, but.
Well, you didn't, but that's okay. Who's keeping track?
Who's keeping track?
Any questions? Um, comments?
A lot of work. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
Yeah, no problem. We'll, we'll try to keep things going. Um, treasurer's report, uh, this one's a little bit um, more concise. Uh, we basically finished up the fiscal year. In, in June, we still have a few outstanding items. Uh, but everything looked normal. Um, we uh, budgets are very much on track. We have a couple areas that exceeded budget, but we've known that they were going to for most of the last half of the fiscal year. Um, I'll just point those out. Uh, we did exceed the budget for maintenance. Uh, that's in large part because of work that was done at the library building. Uh, and a lot of those expenses will need to be transferred from the operating budget to the library reserve uh, and the town municipal building reserve. Um, and that will uh, allow that to be um, hit a hundred percent or just about that. The other area that we went over was roads and drainage. Uh, the winters, the, the storms that we had, the uh, sixty to a hundred thousand dollars in additional expenses uh, put us over. So that's going to be in part compensated through federal FEMA, FEMA funds. And also part of it will be covered by the reserves. One reason we have those. Uh, and the third area that I want to point out that we were um, uh, very close to uh, the budget on the solid ways, we came in at ninety-nine point four percent. So um, I, I again, think that we uh, have a great staff there. They've done a good job keeping the track of things, pulling in revenues. Uh, and um, uh, yeah, uh, just uh, all of our other budget areas are late about on track, somewhere between ninety and a hundred percent expended. So uh, overall, we are um, in the, the, the black. We have more uh, revenues than expenses. So we're good. Uh, and we'll have to do some audit work to clean up, but uh, overall, June looked good. Motor vehicles actually came in much closer to the anticipated level than I, than I thought they would. Um, I was expecting to see a ten, twenty percent drop, uh, but people continue to buy expensive cars. Uh, so we were only down about four percent relative to last year uh, for the month of June. And then overall, we were only down two percent. So really inconsequential changes, uh, and I'm grateful for that because that means we'll have an extra fifty thousand dollars going into the reserve. We can use that to offset taxes next year. So that's my town managers or, and treasurer's reports, and I'm happy to take any final questions.
Okay, thank you very much. The next item is the CEO LPI report. That's the code enforcement officer and licensed plumbing inspector. And he gave us a written update for the fourth quarter of the year, April through June. So that's available for everyone to reference in their packet. Uh, we did receive minutes from many boards, committees and commissions from the age friendly cemetery, connectivity, library, board of trustees, the planning board, the rogue committee and the solid waste and recycling committee. Everybody is doing a great job of sending in draft minutes as well as approved minutes, and it's very much appreciated. Does anybody have any comments on committee meetings? Very interesting reads on some of those. Okay, um, there's an invasive plant grant application. I bet maybe somebody here has been waiting to do that? It's okay. He's got a good bark, but he doesn't bite.
I already surrendered.
I mean, it's Walsh, I'm here on behalf of the uh, conservation commission to give you guys a heads up on uh, the fact that the commission has applied for funding for another invasive plant uh, control project. And actually, this is not control at this point. It's, it's a planning project. So um, just for folks that don't know, invasive plants are those uh, typically non-native plants that uh, displaced, they kind of invade, so to speak, hence invasive and displaced native plants. And uh, the project that we uh, I'm talking about tonight is for Torsy Pond Nature Preserve. And uh, specifically, the issue is um, glossy buckthorn, which is a base of shrub. And if you've spent any time down there walking the trail, particularly the blue trail, you'll see a thicket of shrubs that kind of lines the edge of the marshes between the marsh and the upland. And it's basically creeping along the edge of the uh, the marsh towards the blind. So it covers probably, I don't know, two hundred, three hundred feet or something. So over the years, uh, since I've been going there, I've noticed it, um, you know, basically approaching further and further, further along the shoreline. So um, it came up in discussion. Uh, you probably a few, you might recall that I was here about a year ago for another invasive uh, planning project at Reed Field Town Forest. We did get funding for that project. Uh, so that plan was completed and uh, we uh, subsequently uh, have applied for treatment funding. I don't know if I'm going to get it yet. Uh, that was submitted uh, just a few weeks ago. Uh, but if we do, the uh, control work will be done at the town forest. So this is uh, like I said, a Torsy Pond uh, nature preserve. So the, the way the funding works, it's through uh, main forest service. It's two phases. The first phase is a, is a planning phase. Uh, and we hire a consultant, well, a contractor, in this case, two trees forestry to uh, go to the site and map out invasive plant populations. And so they did the town forest project. Identify where those are, put them on a map and uh, for that particular project, we hired uh, Legacy Woodlot Services to uh, do the control, provided we get the money um, from the uh, forest service. Uh, probably kind of repeat that process for Torsy Pond. And so uh, phase one is that planning process. Uh, and that's what I've already applied for. Phase two would be for treatment, um, provided it makes sense to do it. And I, that, that has not been applied for at this point. We've got to go kind of stepwise, do the planning exercise first. So um, so that's kind of the gist of it. Uh, like I said, two trees forestry will do the work, uh, if we get the thumbs up. For the town forest, uh, it was about a fourteen hundred dollar bill and the funding uh, covers half of that. So I think this project will be about the same at Torsy, probably a similar cost, I would imagine. And uh, so I just wanted to give you guys a heads up on um, that project.
Great. Your group is always very proactive in seeking funding and on, staying on top of things on, so that they don't get as out of hand as they might. And uh, do you need anything from the board to apply for the grant?
Uh, no, I've been in contact with Eric uh, specifics. We just wanted to make sure that the, the board was aware that you were supportive of the direction. Uh, and I just wanted to point out also that the funding, uh, we would be looking at the um, conservation operations budget, but also the reserve, um, the, the um, conservation uh, lands fund as well, if need be for funding the town match for this. Uh, and also two trees forestry uh, is our, I guess unofficial town forest, or they do all of our forestry work. Um, so we have a longstanding relationship with them. So all, all these pieces are, are very familiar um, for myself and the conservation commission. It should be, uh, becoming so for the board. So this is kind of our routine uh, at this point. So I'm happy to, to see this coming together because I think it's really important to keep those uh, areas accessible and, and prevent this, but of the invasive plants.
Anyone else? Thanks very much, Ian.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Now is time for public communication. If there's any member of the public online that would like to say anything? Is there anyone in the room who would like to say anything? We just got five minutes back, Steve.
All right.
Okay. Uh, so next on the agenda is item twenty-five dash zero zero three, the appointment of the following individuals to the open space committee. Um, if there's someone who would like to read those, we can make a group appointment or I can read them.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Amelia Coons, Elaine Katz, Annie Dolman, Howard Lake, Ed Sims and Bruce Purdoin to the open space working.
We've had, we've had an update um, since you probably refreshed your thing of also adding Rob Peel in for the trails committee.
And Rob Peel.
Do we have a second?
We just need someone from Rec now.
So discussion is we need someone from Rec still, and all the other committee spaces have been filled. That's awesome. Is there any further discussion? Seeing not all those in favor?
Oh, um, yeah. Marty Hanish texted me. I almost forgot. I, I, um, yeah, trying to pull my brain back together. Um, uh, Marty Hanish uh, had requested that uh, the budget committee also have a member appointed. So what I had done is I attached the original um, charge that the um, select board had, you know, reviewed and approved. Uh, and so I just wanted to make that point. Um, you certainly can approve that group, but I think that it would be important to have a discussion about whether or not you want to add another committee appointment as well. another committee appointment as well.
So, yeah, we would have to because then we would have two people from the Budget Committee, if Ed's gonna be on. I'm saying if you add one and you add him as an at-large one, then you would have two people from the Budget Committee.
Which we don't want to do.
Right, and that would not be right.
Right, I think.
We can't really approve these, can we? If.
Well, we can approve what we just approved.
Right.
Right.
But not adding in, well, I I don't see any reason to have someone from the Budget Committee anyway, because that wasn't part of our charge when we just discussed this like a year and a half ago.
Yeah, that's fine if we don't.
Yeah.
But I'm saying if we added somebody from the Budget Committee, then we would have to change that, because
Yeah.
that would ultimately be two people from the budget.
Right, and we were trying to keep this very even. So I think this is good. Is everybody okay with that?
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Um, so moving on, old business, uh twenty-five dash zero zero four, consider a revised capital reserve, special revenue and trust fund account policy.
Thank you, Bruce.
This is a second uh time through this, and Eric made some changes that were all noted in red. So we can probably, if everybody's read through this, unless you have any questions. Eric, did you have anything specific you wanted us to?
Uh no, I mean, basically, I I I reviewed my notes and I rewatched the uh the meeting video um and uh did my uh utmost to put in the changes that you requested. Some of them were were qualitative, and I had to just take a a shot at language, but um I think generally, um I I I met the intent fairly well of what uh you either specifically or generally requested. I think it's a better document as a result. Uh we have some um some changes. We increased some thresholds. Um and we specified um some of the roles uh a bit more. Uh and uh, yeah, I think it's it's uh very close to what you had requested from the the hearing.
I thought it was exactly what we requested, and you also made a couple new ones, if I can ever scroll down that far.
Oh, yeah, and we added the two um, the two uh trust fund.
The cemetery perpetual care.
And beach.
Cemetery expansion.
Three.
Town Beach. And they look to be of the same exact format, so.
They are, but I I think those three probably do deserve a little bit of attention, just uh because they're they're new. And uh weren't discussed at that at that hearing, but.
Did you make any changes to the spreadsheet?
Uh the spreadsheet? No.
Okay, yeah, because we had suggested a couple of changes there.
Well, if if you're talking about the the thresholds, then yes, um the um uh depending on which which spreadsheet you're talking about.
Uh yeah, so like Rec Park is in activities. There's fairgrounds, athletic fields for a million. And then two lines later, there's fairgrounds, athletic fields for nine hundred thousand. And we decided we probably didn't need one point nine.
Oh, so you you're talking about the um, yeah, I see what you mean. Yep, the um.
So if you just haven't gotten to it, then that's fine. I'll leave alone, but there was a couple of things I noticed in there.
Yeah, so I guess so you're talking about the other the capital improvement plan, the appendix. Okay, yeah, no, I I hadn't um I hadn't gotten into that.
Okay, yeah, then I'll let you do that for it.
We haven't gotten there yet, Gary. Slow down.
But you but yeah, that that does need to get reviewed and 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 revised um it before we get to the actual process, yeah.
Uh so do we need to take any action on this? Or are this was really just brought back?
Uh I'd appreciate a a a vote on it so I can put it out as a formal policy and get it um basically in final form to the boards and committees for them to review and 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 comment on and just uh really get this out as a precursor for the budget process.
Okay, so not including the appendices so that 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 isn't really required for you to get this out to folks, right?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve the plan, the policy.
The new accounting policy?
It's the Capital Reserve Special Revenue and Trust Fund Account Policy.
Okay.
Did you get that, Angelica?
Say so moved. Yeah, so moved. I vote to approve it. I'll make a motion to approve it.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Oh, I have a motion and a second to approve the Capital Reserve Special Revenue and Trust Fund Account Policy. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none of those in favor. It is unanimous. Saved another like seven minutes there.
We're getting close.
Okay.
Just because you didn't make me repeat it.
Item twenty-five dash zero zero five, discuss the August nine and ten Heritage Day celebration, five minutes.
So I did um, I had a placeholder there first, but I updated the packet, so now we have the full schedule uh of events, and uh we are doing Friday, August ninth, um and uh Saturday, the tenth. Uh the ninth, we have uh the um Wine and Cheese Social with the Historical Society from five to seven, six to eight PM at the Reedfield Beach, is the Oldies Dance and Sock Hop, uh which is gonna be fun. I think the Lions are also doing like root beer floats and stuff down there, so that'll be that'll be cool. Uh we have an extensive listing on on Saturday. I won't go through all that, but I will say that we've got a lot of stuff. It's exciting to have a five K run as part of this uh event now. We're really starting to build out some of these activities. Um and I just want to thank um everybody that contributed to this, because really um this happens because people take individual action, different boards and committees, different organizations. Um and they make it so that it's it can happen, because the volunteers that we have couldn't do it by themselves. But I also want to, of course, thank Dennis Price for the uh hours and hours that he's spent putting this together, making sure it happens and helping with that transition, so. Uh we do have a great uh Heritage Days uh scheduled. Um it's full. Uh we have a lot of the usual activities and a few new ones. Um and then fireworks will be at nine PM at the beach. Um I think the rain date's gonna be Sunday evening, but uh that's uh we're we're in very good shape, uh and again, I want to thank everybody that's been involved with this because uh it's looking really good.
And I'll just put in a little plug that um I went up and cleaned out the sign, the garden at the sign at the fire station. And it's been replanted um by one of the volunteer firefighters, Eric Giles, who also owns Muddy Roots up in Kent Hill, and he planted all the plants which uh came out of our landscaping budget, and it looks really swift, and I actually put the letters up, so thank you, Carol, for getting us on doing this. And I've asked Eric to get us some new strips so we can actually put the letters up and down, and they won't be all weird, so. We're making progress. It looks really good, and it'll be really nice for the fire station when they have their events there on Heritage Days. Okay. Next thing would be the tax commitment done would be the fiber optic buildout done. Consider the allocation of transfer station bottle redemption revenues. This will not take ten minutes. This is item twenty-four zero zero eight.
I think it's your turn, Catherine.
Okay, so we've been collecting bottles, and we've been putting it into a heating fund. And we looked at that in the spreadsheet, and what do we have, like eight thousand or eighteen thousand?
Twenty.
And twenty thousand dollars, and and we can't get we can't get, it's it's years.
There there's been a few donations.
And so we've been trying to give this away for heating assistance, but we can't give away enough, and so this, the new plan is to stop that. And also to then make a new policy where we're going to take the revenue that comes in from the bottles and divide it up to the three towns based on the proportion that we each pay in. Because some of these bottles come from outside of Reedfield, and we've been keeping all that money. So we'll allocate the money. It's basically, it's real close to fifty, twenty-five, twenty-five to each town, and then we need to have something that we're going to do with the Reedfield Chair. And so this is that suggestion, which I think we talked about once before, was to put it to the fairgrounds. So we just need to change that um allocation. So do we just need to ask you to do that?
Yeah, uh I mean, you could take a vote if you want, but I think it's it's uh it's informal and um.
Do it.
Yeah.
We didn't think it was right where people had donated it, and they've always been told it's gonna be for heating relief, that we just take that and put it to something else.
But we have a whole fund for.
But we're not taking the money out that's already in there.
Right, so it'll still be there, but we've only been, we haven't even been giving away a thousand a year.
Yeah, we were.
We ever need.
We have like a fifty thousand dollar account for heating relief anyway, don't we?
Um, no, that's for tax relief.
That's tax.
There is a heating, or it's not maybe fifty thousand, but don't we have a section for heating?
So we we do have general assistance, and this is a supplement to that. Um so uh but yeah, it is, it is very heavily funded. We probably have fifteen to twenty years worth of uh money there, and um uh that that's okay. Um maybe we'll have a heavy year. I think that we're gonna see some need in the future, but um, yeah, yeah, we we do have other other resources, and if we find the need to fund it, we can.
I'd like to make a motion to extend our meeting by three minutes.
Seven minutes.
Oh, I'll second that.
And a motion is second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Um so are we in agreement that we can change the revenue?
Oh, absolutely.
Split it up between the towns and Reedfield Chair will go to the fairgrounds. Okay, um, does anyone have any other business? I'd just like to ask, does anybody know if you're coming to the Summer Residence Meeting on Friday, the second?
I think I can do that.
I think you came last year, I think. Yes, excellent.
I might make it.
Okay, you don't all need to be here, but it would just be nice for me to know that I'm not gonna be hanging out all by myself. Because Eric is not gonna be able to be with us, but you will leave us some information, right?
I I will, and I'll make sure, I'll probably send it out at the same time I send the uh
Okay.
the retreat.
If if I come, can I wear your town manager's baseball hat?
If you if if you want, it's all yours.
Okay, okay. Yes, and we do have the retreat a week from Wednesday, five thirty to eight. Eric's gonna provide us with some pizza and other stuff.
She'll love it. I told her about that retreat, and she goes, is it an overnight? I'm like, God, no.
That's as good as Angelica's before. He doesn't want to spend the night with us.
Yeah, you guys are welcome to bring a snack or like a cookie or something. I'll provide pizza and soda beverages, so.
Don't your kids actually usually provide that?
They usually show up. They usually show up. They help deliver.
Uh, anything else? Motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Yeah. Do I have to say the time?
Nope.
Eight oh four.
I'll second that.
Uh the motion is second, all in favor? Unanimous.
And props to getting us really close to on time.